Call the roll.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Hi, here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
I'm here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. I call this public hearing for the proposed Dempster Dodge Tax Increment Finance District to Order, the Proposed Redevelopment Plan and Project to be Presented by Economic Development Staff, and our consultants Kane McKenna defines a plan to assist a strategically important area of our city in overcoming a number of redevelopment barriers. The proposed Dempster Dodge TIF District includes the Evanston Plaza Shopping Center at the southwest corner of Dempster and Dodge. The parcel is currently owned by Bonnie Management and WHI Real Estate Partners. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear from any interested person or affected taxing districts regarding the proposed plan, the designation of the TIF District, and the adoption of TIF financing. The City Council shall hear all comments, protests, and objections at the hearing. Any interested person or affected taxing district may file written objections and/or be heard orally with respect to any issues embodied in the hearing notice. First, I would like to call Bob Richlicky of Kane McKenna to provide additional detail about the public notices and conformance to the Illinois TIF Act.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob Richlicky with Kane McKenna, my colleague Nick Reifer. When the City Council had passed the ordinance setting up this hearing in March, you were required to have a series of notices posted or sent out to various agencies or groups. Pursuant to the TIF Act, we sent out certified mailing notices to all the taxing districts of record, as well as the State of Illinois on March 27th of 2012. Residential addresses within 750 feet of the TIF District were also sent notices regular mail, identifying the date of this hearing, as well as the availability of information at the City Clerk's Office. Joint Review Board meeting with the affected taxing districts was held on April 12th, 2012. Notice by certified mail to the taxpayer of record, in this case, there was only one, went out on April 23rd. And lastly, there were two newspaper notices on April 19th and April 26th, again, setting out the time and place of the public hearing, as well as what would be covered at the hearing. So the city has conformed to all the required notices pursuant to the TIF Act.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Mark Tendem, who's Chair of the Dempster Dodge Joint Review Board, to provide the report of the Joint Review Board meeting held in April.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Joint Review Board met April 12th, 2012, at 3:00 PM at the Civic Center. Board members in attendance were me, Alderman Mark Tendem, representing the City of Evanston, William Stafford, representing Evanston Township High School District 202, Mary Brown, Evanston Skokie Elementary School District 65, and Michael Sutton, a member-at-large. I was nominated as Chair. Michael Sutton was nominated as public member. Kane McKenna and economic development staff presented the plan. An advisory recommendation to the City Council to approve the plan was approved unanimously four to one.
Thank you, Mark. City Clerk, are there any written comments from the public to be submitted to the City Council?
There were no written reports or questions submitted to the Clerk's Office at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. I invite Paul Zalmazak from our Economic Development Division to provide an overview of the Dempster Dodge TIF District.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Paul Zalmazak with the Economic Development Division. So, the first question we want to ask is, why do we want to use TIF here? Frankly, it's the strongest tool available, hyper-local economic development tool, and the value created in the TIF District is recycled directly back into the district. The TIF will give the city and the property owner body management the ability to attract strong-quality retailers. We're hoping that it will provide some funds for property renovations and some build-out, and provide improvements to the public infrastructure in the right of way. And why do we want to do it now? We believe that the economic climate is improving, and the change of ownership provides a great opportunity to move forward. A number of factors have held the center back from its full potential over the last five to 10 years, particularly the economic downturn, the previous owner's bankruptcy, and the prolonged receivership. There's been a national restructuring of retail, the consolidations, the downsizing, there's been bankruptcies, and that particular center has experienced all of those. And frankly, there's been some local competitive pressures. We have some good shopping centers, Howard Hartree, Main Street Commons, Downtown Evanston. And then outside, we've got Lincolnwood Town Center and Old Orchard. Those are all kind of, that's the retail landscape that provides a kind of a great challenge for Evanston Plaza. Just want to talk a little bit about the proposed boundary. This is a single parcel TIF, Dempster on the north, the backside of the shopping center on the south, and Dodge, the public right-of-way Dodge to the east, and this kind of elongated piece that is actually an alley that is privately owned that goes from Dempster to Greenleaf. And I wanted to put it in the context of the existing, the West Evanston TIF, that's the blue shade. So you can see that the West Evanston TIF kind of surrounds this parcel, and why is We've created this standalone TIF District, really, in leaving West Evanston frankly out of it, because back in 2005 and 2007, when the West Evanston TIF was created, and when it was amended, the assessed value, the assessed valuation of Evanston Plaza was actually a little too high. The real estate cycle hadn't taken, or the downturn hadn't taken place. Their vacancy rates were relatively low, and our consultants will talk a little bit about that. So at the time, the assessed valuation was a little too high to have any kind of advantage from implementing a TIF. But frankly, we also want to make sure that, I mean, these have distinct goals. I mean, the West Evanston TIF, we want to leave that as a standalone, to kind of protect what's happening there. While the TIF has a 23-year lifespan, we're looking at the immediate short-term goals of the TIF. And the consultants are going to outline, and you've read in your packet, there's a $20 million budget associated with it, that's roughly the amount that would be collected over 23 years. That's not an annual collection, that's the cumulative total over 23 years. We will not, I'm just going to say, we're not going to be giving $20 million to Bonnie Management. This is a, and there's a line item on the budget that addresses how we deal with private development. But frankly, in the short term, we want to help reposition the shopping center to improve the occupancy levels, that's the key thing, and we want to use it to leverage some quality tenants. We believe that Bonnie Management, they've had a successful track record at their other shopping centers, we believe that they could probably fill the center very quickly, but we want to incentivize them a little bit and leverage maybe something a little bit above average that puts the center in a competitive advantage. We want to make sure that we're redeveloping, revitalizing the neighborhood shopping center, and increase sales tax revenues. And then in the long term, we can think differently about how we use the site. Retail changes very quickly. We've seen that at this particular shopping center a number of times over the last decade or so. So how do we prepare for that change? And one way we do that potentially, we have to discuss this as staff and as a community, is potentially allowing that increment to build up and have a savings account, so to speak, to use to, to position ourselves to be ready for that change and the next change. There will be change. And finally, I just need to stress this, that any TIF assistance is at the discretion of this body. If the Council approves the designation, we'll begin negotiations with the property owner, with the focus, again, of attracting quality retailers, generating significant sales taxes. And we'll work with the Council, continue our public outreach, we've had a number of ward meetings, to determine the types of public infrastructure and improvements that are desired. I'd like to invite Nick Reifer, Kane McKenna, to come up and present the details. I just want to point out my, if I can change the slide, my contact information. As I've said at the community meetings and the ward meetings, I'm available to take any questions you have. This is an appeal to the community. Any ideas you have, I'm available. My number and my email address are posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the Council. Tonight, I'm just going to focus really on one question, and that is, how does the area qualify under the TIF Act as a blighted improved area? I just want to preface that by saying, under the Act, blight is a very specific meaning. It's not the common usage that you might have in everyday conversation. It has a very specific meaning under the TIF Act. The slides that are in the packet and that are on the website and publicly available, there's a whole series of information, so I won't get into every slide. I just want to talk about really the second point on the factors qualifying the area. So these are the factors, right here, 13 factors, and Kane McKenna reviewed the site. We walked through the, you know, the shopping center. We've analyzed the 13 factors. What we came down with was that there were six factors present. You need five under the TIF Act to qualify it as blighted improved. The first one, and perhaps the most important, is obsolescence, and that's a standalone factor, but it sort of summarizes some of the other factors, including the very last one, lagging EAV. Those two are very closely connected. Well, we've had a situation where the EAV, over a five-to-six-year period, has lagged behind the city EAV, in fact, relative to the starting point, is below what it, below what it was in 2006. So in terms of obsolescence, you see that in the EAV numbers, but you also see it in the declining market values, and then you also see it in the reduced occupancy levels that Paul was referring to. In terms of the ownership numbers, the new owners indicated that the current level is 52% occupied, 48% unoccupied, which is extraordinarily high, as you might imagine. It's not uncommon for, you know, shopping centers to have a normal turnover or churn, but that usually is in the 10% to 15% to 20% range, this is well above that range. And I would just add that not only is that a, that's not just a cyclical thing, we believe that's a kind of a structural, long-term thing, that a tool like TIF would be needed to fundamentally address. These are just really quickly some photographs of the vacant storefronts. So you see, this is one of the storefronts, I think closer to the east side on Dodge. That's an interior, and then this is, I believe, connected to the old Frank's Nursery. It's been vacant for quite some time. And that's just the backside. In addition to some of those factors, we have some other TIF Act factors, such as deleterious layout, which is, speaks to some of the land use coordination problems, and environmental cleanup. Environmental cleanup speaks to the fact that there was, at some point in the last 30 or 40 years, some environmental contamination. Costs were incurred. Under the TIF Act, you had to demonstrate that costs were incurred to remediate, which they did. They placed an engineered barrier over that area, so it meets that criterion under the Act.
Could you wait just a second, Alderman Burris? Did you want to ask questions now, or?
Yeah, actually.
We will have time.
Okay, I just wanted to go. Could you go back to the slide about the layout?
Sure.
I can't even pronounce that word, but all right. Could you talk to me more about that? I don't understand how you're going to change the layout, and what does, what does that really mean? The egress, I don't see there's a problem with the ingress and egress, so.
Yeah, maybe I'll start, and then Bob might chime in, but basically, some of the classic problems deal with the juxtaposition of the uses inside the TIF relative to other non-residential uses, you know, so a lot of times it.
Specifically for this site. I want you to address it for this particular site.
From, Bob Richlicky from Kane McKenna. From the standpoint of this site, in terms of internal circulation, there's been, in terms of our review of the site, as well as discussions with the owners, two things in terms of the size of the buildings and the depth, as it relates to replacement users, and the way the center was originally designed in terms of some of the bigger boxes. This center itself was more of a function of having not only a couple large anchors, but also some medium-sized boxes in terms of where their layouts were. In fact, when new users are being considered, part of the problem relates to the layout in terms of making the spaces smaller, or more compressed, and basically having a lot of dead space in terms of either the rear or sides of the buildings. Access points, again, as it relates to the way the center was originally designed for certain users, as you either make smaller spaces, issues as it relates to parking availability and entrances, and then lastly, in terms of some of the circulation, maybe towards some of the back, in terms of uses related to either potentially service, as well as retail, and maybe, again, splitting some of the spaces and having access for those. So, I mean, from an economic standpoint, really, when we looked at that, there were some additional costs associated with some, either reconfiguration or retrofitting, that would be part of this factor.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just need to follow, because I am over there kind of regularly. Having issues with the parking, and if you're going to make the building smaller, or the individual tenant spaces, I can understand that. But as far as really the egress and the parking, there's really not much you would change. There's a lot of already curb cuts, there's plenty of parking for as many tenants as you could have. So I'm just a little suspect about this particular qualification factor, when really, the only thing that's inadequate is the actual building itself, as far as being able to make the spaces smaller. You're really not going to change anything else with the parking, or the delivery of materials. So that's why I'm asking, because what you're saying is, doesn't make a lot of sense to me on the ingress and egress and the parking, because there's plenty of parking there.
But I think, and I agree with you, in terms of the parking, I think it had to do, when we were looking at some of the ideas for reuse perhaps, especially in some of the central spots where that Frank's Nursery was, there were some issues as it related to either access from the front, as opposed maybe to the rear, as well as some issues as related to loading or unloading for some of the uses that they were talking about. So, from the standpoint of maybe overall parking field, probably overall parking field is fine, from the access or regress in terms of the two or three curb cuts that come in there, again, you're right, there's probably not much that could be done, but it was more as it related, I think, to some of the internal circulation for some of the users. Again, and part of that is contingent, depending on the folks that they're going to be ultimately talking to, and the kind of lease arrangements that could be negotiated.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, Bob, given the configuration of the stores in the primary strip, the Dominique Strip, and then where City Trends is, or whatever that store is, my recollection is that those properties were pre-leased, so they were designed, the spaces were designed for pre-leased users.
That's what we understood, that's what we understood as well.
And so there were several big boxes.
Right, or medium boxes as well.
So there were, at the time, they seemed big to me. But it, so, they were designed for those users.
That's correct.
And then it seems to me, when that shopping center opened, it was awful. I mean, except maybe a few little, I mean, there used to be little dress stores, and shoe stores, and Blockbuster, there was a Toys R Us, believe it or not, at the outset. So, we're left with the remnants of those vacancies. I mean, that's what happened.
And, and again, in terms of, I think Nick mentioned, as well as Paul, you know, kind of a coincidence, as it related to the distressed market conditions we've all experienced, plus some of the special-use original design features of the center, they kind of coalesced in order to make it a lot more difficult to have economical leasing of a site.
And I was there one day with Alderman Braithwaite, with a potential user, who stood right in that huge parking lot and said, well, you know, he indicated that he would really like to be there, but he would have to tear this down. And he pointed to a chunk of space and said, this would have to be torn down, because I have to build my own custom, you know, it was a chain. So, I mean, so, that's going to have to be made possible if more users like that come forward, who are interested in maybe reconfiguring some of those spaces.
And I think that's part of, you know, the issue as it relates to the importance of TIF potentially for the site, because in terms of turning it around, it's going to really be a question, in terms of addressing the vacancy, are the types of users, you know, that you're going to be able to attract to the site, that the community will use users that will be successful and be able to pay rents, that allow for the center to be properly maintained over time. So it's really going to tie into the kinds of uses, the kinds of users ultimately, that you're going to want to be able to attract, that are not only from a market standpoint going to occupy, but also make sense in terms of long-term viability for that site.
But the developer, or the owner of the center, has to be willing to, you know, cooperate. I mean, we could have all the money we want for incentivizing people, but if there's, you know, if it's like the previous owner, it won't matter.
That's right, right.
Okay, Alderman Wilson has a question. Then I think we should hold the rest of the questions until after Kane McKenna's finished.
Okay, and maybe this was going to be addressed later in the presentation, but you mentioned in passing the types of uses that they're considering, and the, I think, who they're talking to. So, who are they talking to, and what types of uses are being considered?
It's part of the rub. I mean, the uses that they're talking to generally are primarily retail, but there's also some service users. Given the fact that letters of intent, at least at the last go-around that we had with them, have not been signed, there are some issues as it relates to confidentiality at this time right now. But most of the uses that they've been talking to have been a combination of retail with some service.
Alderman, Scott Inbiner is a representative we've been dealing closely with, and for example, he's going to the ICSC convention, I think it's next week, or starting this weekend, so he's pursuing tenants that way. And again, it is, as Bob had mentioned, there's, he's pursuing some retail, he's also considering some additional options of kind of service and other type use. So, we're really, we haven't even started the redevelopment or renegotiation process, because we have to have this thing designated before we start that, but we do remain in close contact with him.
Okay, I'll just save the rest of my questions.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Just a couple more slides. I think I touched on that. Inadequate utilities, the engineer that the city uses assisted us in making a finding of inadequate utilities, and this is not uncommon, where you have a lot of materials used in the underground pipe system, or water main system, such as cast iron pipes that are prone to outages. I think I touched on this earlier, and this feeds to the other finding of obsolescence. We have a finding of a lagging EAV, where you have three or more out of the five years, if you have it lagging relative to the city, or relative to CPI, you make that finding. And hopefully, you can make that slide out, but you see, starting in 2005, the base year, you start at a high point of 13 million. It did climb a little bit in '08, and then it dropped severely, and that kind of coincides with the assessor capturing the market trends, and it dropped drastically for that one parcel. So in relative terms, relative to the city, which also experienced a slight decline from '09 to 2010, there was similar declines, particularly, you see in 2009, where it was So those are the key findings with respect to the five factors that were needed. We found six, so we have one extra factor above and beyond the five minimum that were needed under the TIF Act. I think, at this point, you know, there's some additional slides, but I think that's, just leave that for the record, and I'll turn it back over to Paul.
Paul, it's time for Alderman to ask questions, unless, did you have anything more? All right. Alderman Burris.
Hi, I guess I'm not, I'm not sure who, if I'm asking to Paul, or to Kane McKenna, but the inadequate utilities, I have a question about that as well. So when the shopping center was built, however long ago now, 15, 15 years ago? So, not, not, we're not talking a long period of time. So when the shopping center was built, I'm assuming that the new utilities were put in as part of the shopping center, and the shopping center is surrounded by a TIF already that could be used for replacing obsolete utilities. So my question is, why are we creating a TIF, we're saying inadequate utilities, if, I would assume, new utilities were put in when the shopping center was built?
As to when they were put in, I think the, your basic service in terms of your water and sewer lines that surround the center, they were already in place.
Right, but surrounding the center is part of, already part of a TIF.
Of the West Evanston TIF.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm not sure that you can use that as an element of a TIF for the utilities, if it's already, those deteriorating utilities are already part of a TIF. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right, right.
Because the development that's, that you're asking to be TIF'd, has new pipes and utilities when the center was created. So do you understand what I'm asking?
Uh-huh.
Why, because you're, you're basically double-dipping on the, the element of a TIF, because when we recreated the West Evanston TIF, you said utilities are bad, so we put those in that TIF, correct?
Um, I have to say, yeah, I'm not sure about the.
And then you're saying the utilities are bad again, and you're using it for a second TIF. I just want clarification.
Yeah, and we'll double-check on that, but as to the inadequate utilities, I'd have to double-check to see if that was in the West Evanston TIF designation report, and again, if it were to be, again, each area kind of stands on their own. They do have some interconnection as it relates, they both feed off the same system, but it's neat, well, in our opinion at least, it's not like double-dipping. I mean, each area faces the same issue as it relates to the older infrastructure, and the need for either reconstruction or improvement of that infrastructure system, as it. and the need for either reconstruction or improvement of that infrastructure system as it, as it affects those properties.
But what I'm asking is, when the property was recreated, it's not that old. I would assume new utilities were put in as part of that center, and was that looked at? Because the center has, it's, it's just not that old.
Right, I think from the standpoint of the actual onsite utilities, uh, that's not as much the issue as it were relating to the off-site utilities that fed in. I think the lines that are underneath the parking lot, the lines, you're right, those, those were all put in, uh, as part of the center's, um, construction. What we're really looking at is kind of a bigger picture thing, what the connection is, uh, to the utilities of which the center feeds into.
Right, but those utilities are already part of a TIF, is my point.
Well, part of them are, remember, all.
Look at, look at the map.
But they might not be in the.
And Madam Mayor.
Alderman, I'm gonna try to reset, kind of. And I, and I understand the question. Um, the, the first point of clarification is, if, cause if we could hit the lights really quick. You know, yes, West Evanston has, you know, it has its own boundary and it has its own utilities. And if you notice, Dodge Avenue, um, kind of south of Dempster, north of Greenleaf, is also, the public right-of-way aspect is in, uh, the proposed Evanston Plaza or the Dempster Dodge TIF. Um, so I'm just pointing that, that out as a point of clarification. So it's not just the parking lot and the building, it's also some of the public right-of-way. And I'm gonna, I'll ask our consultants to address the technical question, which is, um, how do you define inadequate utilities? I mean, there's state statute that defines it, and, uh, we rely on them to, to define, um, that as a finding. And I think, I think they can do that based on the report.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Um, I, I did find the, uh, the letter we received or the analysis from the engineer. Specifically, there's a seven hundred feet area of sewer that runs from Dodge to the north, down to Crane, and it runs along Dodge, uh, from, again, Dempster to Crane. So that's the key area, at least according to the engineer, that was inadequate. And I, and also, uh, it doesn't really double dip in terms of the other surrounding TIF districts, which are further north and, and further west.
Could you say that again? How much, how, how far was it that it was describ-? No, I understand where, how many feet were you saying is, that that's why we designated it?
It was, uh, seven hundred feet.
Seven hundred feet is, is all? Okay, that's all, I just want clarification, thanks.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, again, this is a, a, a public hearing to, uh, have testimony provided. As we come back for the final action, we'll make sure that additional information is provided on this point, including the memorandum from the consultants. So when the council's asked to take action, that'll be before you.
Please include the age of the shopping center, because I think it's a little older than Alderman Burris.
Yeah, I, I just don't know.
You just want me to show my age? Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, gentlemen. Um, my question is, is, once this TIF is in place, what is the incentive for the owner of the, this primary parcel to step up rather than step away from helping us with the redevelopment efforts?
I think from a standpoint of, of the city, uh, in addition to your normal powers relating to both zoning and other entitlements, uh, for land uses, what the TIF will give you is the power of the purse uh, in terms of the utilization of monies that are generated, potentially generated by increases in value, um, over the base. Those dollars are not only controlled by the city, but you're required to spend those dollars within the envelope of the boundaries of that area. Uh, so, from the standpoint of utilization or negotiations with the owner, I think you now have an additional tool. Uh, you have the ability to maybe press a little harder on certain items. Paul and Nick both mentioned, um, you know, kind of uses or users that the city might, um, wanna see there, you know, not only for the community, but, you know, overall long-term viability, uh, that intersection. Uh, the TIF, in our opinion, gives you the ability to add on to what you normally have in terms of your planning and entitlement in terms of actual incentive dollars, uh, to force the issue a little more strongly.
And, and can you give us some perspective, please, on, on a, on single parcel, primarily a single parcel, TIF districts, and, you know, where they fit into the general scheme of TIFs? Is there precedent in Evanston elsewhere?
Well, from the city itself, if we start from more of the micro level, uh, you know, Howard Hartree TIF, basically a shopping center, that's a, a single-use TIF that the city has considered over the years. Uh, the Southwest TIF, although a little bigger, had maybe, you know, four or five different uses. Uh, they were part of the Southwest TIF. I mean, some of your other TIF districts, uh, Downtown Two, uh, West Evanston, uh, Howard Ridge, are larger, multiple uses. And in our, if we go more to a macro level, I'd say about forty percent of the TIFs that our company works on, uh, are related to single-type uses. And again, you know, it's part of the issue of, um, what works. I mean, in terms of policy, what's an important area for the municipality, um, how tightly do you wanna focus? Um, uh, one thing, as it relates to the single use above the multi-use, uh, districts, uh, is your focus is a lot more concentrated. You've got one property or one, uh, set of issues to work with as it relates to the TIF. You could be, uh, not only more focused, but a little more surgical as it relates to how you're gonna use the money.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just one last question. The, um, uh, the projected kind of fund for this TIF is twenty million dollars over twenty-three years, but it doesn't mean that it's a twenty million dollar blank check for this shopping center. Uh, we are not required to make a twenty million dollar investment to realize our short-term goals here, or even our longer-term goals here. It doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, this TIF's life will reach twenty-three years, or that our expenditures here will reach twenty million dollars. Uh, it's not a blank check.
It, no, it is not. Um, that's more of a statutory requirement. The TIF Act requires the city, as part of its plan, not only to identify the geographic boundaries, which you've done, the types of land uses, but also to give the community, as well as the taxing districts, some idea of what the maximum exposure might be over the term of the TIF, in terms of items that the city might spend their, uh, TIF increment on. Any amounts that are to be spent would have to be authorized by the city council, you know, either on a pay-as-you-go basis, um, or as it relates to either development or public improvements or other infrastructure needs that you may have. Those expenditures all have to be approved by the city council on a case-by-case basis. Uh, in the event, uh, that you are not able to, um, identify expenditures or not have obligations to which to put those, uh, monies to use, you are required then to declare it a surplus and return those monies back, uh, to the annual taxing districts. You have an annual report, which you comply with, and the taxing districts, uh, in the city are required to come into joint review board meetings annually in order to review your progress and make a determination, uh, that the monies are spent, uh, according to the Act.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I understand that the statutory elements are important, uh, as a, as a threshold question, but I, I guess I was more interested in understanding and seeing, I guess, what, what the unique problems are with regard to this center, and I, I guess I really didn't get any of that from the plan. And I guess I'll sort of pose that question, is what do you see as the unique problems that have plagued this center and prevented it, you know, businesses have come and gone, and they've failed for a reason, and I have my own intuitive thoughts on that. But I was just interested in, on what the analysis was that you guys came up with.
Well, two, um, points I wanna make. One, the plan itself, uh, was meant to be a little more of an umbrella or broad-based as a, because it's potentially a twenty-three-year plan. And not only does the market change, but life could change, uh, as, as it relates to, um, the administration of the program. So, from a standpoint of being more specific in the plan as to, let's say, we, we didn't put things in there like you're going to look at twenty thousand square feet of reuse for the northeast center, for example. You know, the, the budget purposely and the land uses, uh, were, were kept somewhat broad to give you the flexibility as it relates to proposals that come into the city council and to staff on, on a case-by-case basis. So, uh, your pers- your observation is correct. The, the, the plan, uh, i- is purposely broad, and part of it has to do with flexibility, given, uh, the, the fact that the time, potential time period in which the TIF could be in place, and to allow for different development proposals that either may shift with the market or what the city requirements are for that property, which, which not all are, are known at this time. Uh, in terms of some of our analysis, is what we see as some of the unique features, uh, and, and why a TIF could be important. You know, you know, first we looked at, uh, we're numbers guys, looked at the, the valuation. I mean, the, the valuation, uh, you know, has declined, has suffered, and part of that has to do with, I think, two of the factors relating to both, you know, the, the functional obsolescence of the center, based in part on its original design, uh, and in part on what I would call outer economic obsolescence related to the marketplace itself. Um, in, in terms of trying to structure lease deals that offer a return both to the owners and makes sense to the tenants, um, that's the rub. And, and it, and it would seem that, you know, you know, given the, the chronic vacancy in that center, the potential for the TIF would allow for a way to have a bridge or cross that gap between, let's say, negotiations with the, uh, ownership and their tenants, as well as now also the city being involved as a potential, uh, party in the, in the, in the review in terms of identifica- identifying, let's say, tenants that are more sales tax-oriented, tenants that maybe wouldn't consider that, because let's say the rent might be fifteen dollars a foot and their threshold, uh, might be thirteen dollars a foot, you know, either because of the fact they think the market's untested, um, or, or they believe they need a little bit of a cushion, let's say, for the first four or five years, until they're able to make, until they can make a go of it. That's where TIF can potentially be in a, a way to assist, uh, those kind of projects in a, a, a market that's either had some perception that it's tough for whatever, you know, whatever reasons, um, and the ability to try to attract new users or get them interested because you can directly affect some of the, you know, economics of, uh, occupancy.
Alright, so I'm gonna roughly translate that to, we're gonna help pay for putting some of the businesses in there.
It's, you could.
I mean, there, I, that's the only way I'm interpreting it.
You, you could. And again, and the hope would be, and you've done, in terms of your analysis or our assistance to the city in the past, is there's always been a careful, um, tightrope you've walked in terms of making sure the project can't pay for itself, identifying that there is some public benefit or public, uh, improvements that are tied to it, that it's not just a repayment as it relates to the dollars and cents, but there's also some other public benefit associated with the, with the, uh, city investment.
And is, is that gonna be more challenging? Because what we've really got is just a single parcel, which is only the shopping center.
Yes and no. Um, again, we, we have the ability to be more focused here because it is a single parcel. And, given the fact that the base has lowered over the years in terms of what the potential could be, based on, let's say, when it's fully occupied, uh, the ability to tap into some significant increment could also be, you know, very good as it relates to generating new tax dollars.
The, um, the West Evanston TIF, I'll just be blunt and honest. I think people don't like to go to that shopping center because it's an uncomfortable neighborhood, because of the way Dodge looks, because of the way, uh, the other surrounding areas look. And unfortunately, the West Evanston TIF hasn't changed that look. This shopping center is the best-looking of the three corners. And I guess what I'm, what I'm having a problem with is I don't see how this is gonna fix the other three corners. And I, it's, it's a somewhat rhetorical question, so I don't expect an answer from you. So, anyway, that's, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
I think the shopping center isn't attractive because of the vacancies. I, I go there at least twice a week, sometimes three times a week. Um, and I attempt to ignore the vacancies, but were they occupied, which this TIF could, could do through incentives, um, then I think you would see a huge change. Just wanted to comment on the increment. One of the most exciting things about this is that there is a possibility that this shopping center, that this TIF, could generate twenty million dollars in incremental taxes, which means, over the base of what they're paying now, we could see an additional twenty million dollars over this period of time. I, I don't know what else could be a better measure of success than an additional twenty million dollars. So, there is nothing to lose by doing this because we're not getting any increment now, because in fact, the base is slipping. Let's get it while it's down. I mean, the, the only good thing about, about the assessments being down is that the increment will be greater, um, which is exactly the reason why we didn't include this originally in the other TIF. So, you know, I, I think that you just can't lose. We're, we're not reaching into our pocket. We're saying, "Look, shopping center, it's up to you. You're either gonna generate this increment, and we're gonna plow it back in to making you more successful, or not. Or not." Um, and so I, I really encourage us to support this. And another thing about the infrastructure, when you have adjacent, um, taxing increment financing districts, you can share, can you not?
Yes.
Some of that increment, especially, I, I'm sure especially having to do with infrastructure.
And that's ex- and I think that was legislatively, that's exactly the reason that provision was added because of the sewer lines or water lines go on for, you know, a large distance and, and are interconnected between various areas.
So I, I just don't see that in this case, that we have much, much to lose and only things to gain. And one of the, one of the very definite things you can do with an increment in an area like this is demolition. I mean, and so, I mean, I see some of, I, that Frank space I see is probably ultimately being demolished because there's so much vacant space behind there. I don't know if that'll ever happen, but it would be possible with.
Bowling alley.
Bowling alley, bowling. So, uh, whatever, whatever goes there, you know, and so.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, thank you. And, and thank you all for the report. Um, first of all, I agree with Alderman Rainey's statements, and so thank you very much for that. I don't see the downside to creating this TIF. Um, I would have to disagree with Alderman Wilson's statements in terms of the shopping center not being attractive. I will admit that there are a number of vacancies there, but it is widely used by many residents. The Dominics is widely used by many residents. Dance, uh, Bayas Dance Studio is widely used by many Evanston residents, and it also has appeal for many residents outside of Evanston. Pinino's, I think, is also another destination. The, the issues that we're dealing with are vacancies. I feel this TIF will address those vacancies. Um, I will ask Paul Zalmazak from Economic Development to just speak briefly to the short-term and long-term, uh, benefits of the TIF. Like, I think you addressed it very well in the beginning of your presentation. Uh, our goal is to get stores in there. They're gonna, for myself and Alderman Holmes and, and what we would like to see for the west side of Evanston, uh, definitely jobs. And in addition to that, registers that are gonna add to the general, um, general budget. So if you can touch on some of the things that we can look forward to as we look out in the next maybe ten to fifteen years, and, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Um, so, so conceptually, we, we have an immediate need, which is to address the, the vacancies. And, um, how we do that is, and, and, and I believe that this, this particular, um, property owner will have success in attracting retailers to this site. Um, you know, our incentives would be in place, and we, again, we haven't negotiated anything yet. Um, the incentive would be put in place to really elevate or to get a retailer that's kind of above what one might expect in the short term. And what that means is, uh, do we help a little bit with build-out? Maybe, we don't know yet. Is there, um, some need from the developer to enter into a long-term lease where he has to do some, um, extensive concessions? Where we could help with that, that's a potential use of the TIF. Um, so the, the immediate short-term, in terms of getting the, the occupancy levels back up, that's our immediate need. We need sales tax generated, uh, and, uh, the real, again, the primary focus of a TIF is to, to generate property tax. So, longer-term, and I, I don't have the, the ten or fifteen-year crystal ball, but conceptually you could imagine that, um, just as its predecessor use was a, a metal plating company, as I understand the history, and that use became obsolete, perhaps this shopping center use becomes obsolete. And what we've heard from the developer himself is that the shopping center is in a, in a size range that puts it in a kind of a betweener state. It's a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot shopping center roughly, um, and it serves a community shopping center, um, kind of role. And a community shopping center role is usually in, um, in the range of a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So, um, that addresses, addresses some of the obsolescence issues. So a. So, imagine a day, ten or fifteen years from now, where there is some other use for this site, and touching out what Alderman Rainey had suggested, if you could use some of the money for demolition and you rebuild something else. I mean, this is conceptual, but we really do need to focus on the short term, which is, we know what we have, we need to fill it up.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank our consultants. I think they do a very good job. And I'm, thank you for your justification for the TIF, and I appreciate all of the things that you said. And Paul, I think you've done a very good job on this, too. I think you deserve a lot of credit for it. I see this as just a really important thing for us to do, and I do want to assure Alderman Wilson, I think this will have an incredible effect on the four corners of that intersection that are so important to the city of Evanston. I very much like the idea of a neighborhood, almost a small regional shopping area, and I think that, as it develops over time, it gives us a unique opportunity to have the space grow with the city. As neighborhoods change, or desires change, restaurants come and go, retail comes and goes, having a space of that size really gives us a lot of flexibility. Even when Alderman Jean Baptiste was sitting next to me, I volunteered with him to work on this, because I think the space is so wonderful, and so visible, and could bring so much to the city of Evanston, so I would encourage my fellow council members to support this.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Well, I just wanted to comment, in terms of the use of the shopping center, I think the staff has done a fantastic job of presenting the TIF. But for those of us who remember from the beginning of the usage of the shopping center, and I hope our staff will guide the new owner, in terms of, you can't, you just can't have anything, you have to have things that people want to visit. Those things that people enjoy, those folk are still there, a lot of people are still there. And I think people will come if there's something that attracts them. I don't, I know that even the other three corners, or the other two corners, I don't count the one on the north, on the southeast side, but McDonald's and Burger King, I mean, they've been doing fantastic business all along, because people like to go there, whether it's good for you or not, but they still like to go. But inside the shopping center, if we can remember, I think it even was brought before our Economic Development Committee, and this was before we got this new Cracker Jack staff that we have now, when Curves wanted to stay, but couldn't, because they couldn't afford to pay the rent. And there was no give or take, you know, in terms of the kinds of things that the previous owner was not willing to sit down and talk to. So, there's been people who wanted to stay and couldn't because of all kinds of reasons. So, I think with our staff's guidance and working with the new owners, that we could all be very, very proud of what can actually happen with this, with the new owner and a new vision.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
I have a couple of questions. One is to clarify, the Howard Hart Tree TIF, it wasn't an established shopping center when that TIF was put into place, is that correct?
I believe, yeah. No, that was an industrial building, I think of the old Bell and House.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that the TIF was put into place to do the redevelopment. The TIF was not put into place after the development was done, so the TIF money was used for the infrastructure to redo Howard Hart Tree as a single parcel.
And also, I think demolition and--
Right, but what I'm saying is, there wasn't something already in place. It was used to create the shopping center, not to put it on top of it.
That's correct.
Right, I want to be, I want to be clear that, when Alderman Grover asked the question, I want to make sure that we're, we understand exactly what the single parcel, it was pulling parcels together, it was a complete redevelopment. So, just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you. And I also want more clarification on, I think you said that the developer could use TIF dollars to offset how much they could charge for tenants coming in. I'm not sure that I actually found that in what's required legally under TIF. I, in my previous life, was on a TIF commission many years ago, but I didn't think that was part of eligible uses for the TIF. And then, Mr. Zalmanak, you made a comment that you were confident that this developer could attract tenants when the other developer couldn't. And I was, I was wondering if you could share with us what evidence you find in that? I'm just really skeptical about putting a TIF on a parcel that's already developed, when really what this is about is about commercial developer really marketing. I'm not sure why we're taking on this burden when they just need to find better tenants. I'm not sure that having a TIF is going to create an atmosphere to bring in more tenants, or better tenants, or the tenants we want. I am pro-TIF overall. I'm for redevelopment of areas that haven't been developed. I just don't see how this works here really effectively. And I would like to, once again, go back to Alderman Grover's original question of, where has TIF been used like this? I don't, I would like an example.
From, well, two things. Let's go to the question about the differential, and, you know, we talked about writing down on the rent. I mean, you're right, a rent write-down is not an eligible cost.
Okay, but you said that right.
You really have to tie, you really have to tie that to ineligible costs. For example, if a $2 savings in rent, you would translate that to, if it's a 20,000-foot space, you would translate that to $40,000, $2 times $20,000 of rehab work, which is an eligible cost. So, you would basically tie the ability to use TIF money to pay for something, that would be, whether it was, again, we were talking earlier about some of the spaces being a little too deep or a little too narrow, it would allow for, or for cutting spaces up, let's say, and rather than pass those dollars directly on the rent, which may make it uncompetitive or not competitive, you'd have the ability at a TIF to pay for a portion of that rehab, or offset a portion of that rehab. So, you do, you're right, you do have to tie it to ineligible cost. But, and again, but usually the way these things work, the tenant and the owner are going to look at rents in terms of, you know, can the tenant pay it? Is the rent that the owner receives sufficient, you know, for their return? But then you would have to do the translation in the middle to say, okay, what are you going to use the TIF dollars for, and what does it result in terms of a reduction, potential reduction in rent? But you would have to tie it to ineligible costs.
Right, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that for everyone, that what you said originally was not really completely accurate, that you could really give incentive dollars for the, to bring down the cost of the rent.
I mean, effectively, that's what would happen, though.
But that's not what, I just want to be really clear, because we have people watching, they're like, well, that's not a legal way to--
No, you're correct.
Okay.
I mean, we stand corrected. I mean, but again, you know, what you would do is have to tie it to ineligible cost. And as to the second question related to, you're talking about redevelopment uses in terms of properties, and again, if it's basically not just in Evanston, I could point to a couple we worked on in Skokie and Niles, where it was the old AT&amp;T buildings, Tuohy and Carpenter, which basically were existing buildings, they were industrial, and portions were reused for commercial. So, basically, the TIF, what it did was reuse the buildings, I mean, they were existing buildings that were in place for either alternate use in that case.
But you were changing, you were changing the use of the building, so you're redeveloping the building for something else.
But it was, okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you--
No, I--
We were talking about existing buildings.
An existing, so you're not changing the use here at all. You're not really improving the infrastructure unless you're moving, you're making the building shorter, you may be doing a little bit better with delivery, but you're not overall changing the function of the shopping center. That's what I'm asking.
Right, Alderman, that, in the short term, that's correct. I mean, that's, the shopping center is a retail commercial strip, and that's what it is. And I think in these other examples, it's, I mean, it's fact that they were some other use before. And that's where Alderman Braithwaite's question earlier, I think, is kind of relevant, is, you know, what could this be later in life? I mean, in the short term, yes, we do contemplate, and again, we have to negotiate with your approval, your consent, any deals we potentially would do with them. One thing that the consultants didn't touch on was the budget itself, and it's a small percentage of the budget is at least committed or planned for rehab of existing structures. There's a lot of other line items on the budget. Your other question about, you know, history doesn't necessarily suggest that they'll be successful in the future, but they've had some success with other shopping centers in the region and in Wisconsin that are, that have high occupancy levels, and that's why I think they can tap into that, into that network, and really bring some retailers to town.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Paul just touched on one I was going to comment on. This developer, or shopping center owner, whatever you call them, and manager, right? They own and manage their--
Yes, their full-service real estate firm, right.
Right, which is a big plus. And, I mean, they have, they have some very desirable users in their shopping centers. One of the things I wanted to say about the small users at this location now is, I don't know so much about the rent problem, but I know at the end of the year, when they tally up the additional CAM, because they're triple net leases, that some of the small users have been burdened, probably not this year, because there wasn't a lot of snow removal, with $10,000 and $12,000 end-of-the-year additional CAM payments, which is a killer. And so, there's got to be a way that this shopping center owner, I mean, I know the leases are in place, but there's got to be some way these small users, who are very, very desirable and long-term users, can avoid some of that burden, because that's huge. At the end of the year, a $10,000 additional CAM expenditure is outrageous, when they're paying CAM every month. So, I just don't see how we can, how we can lose on this, whether or not there's an identical example to this kind of TIF, and I'm sure there are many of them. We don't, we don't tend to make big mistakes with our TIFs. We haven't. This could be our first mistake, but I think it's worth the risk. We're not out a nickel. If this, if the TIF does not generate increment, there's not going to be a penny of increment spent. So, there you go.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Wilson.
Thanks, and this is a nice shopping center to me. The businesses that are there, I'm there almost on a daily basis. My daughter dances there three times a week. I can't live without Panino's, and I'm always at the Dominics, you know, they, the cashiers know me by name, as do the Panino's people. So, when I made my comment about people being uncomfortable going to the shopping center, that's not me. This is, this is my neighborhood. It's not my ward, but this is my neighborhood, and these are places that I frequent on an extremely regular basis. And over the past however many years, it's been very frustrating to me and to my neighbors to see the lack of action in the West Evanston TIF area and in the shopping center. And I guess what frustrates me is that I don't view this as a, I don't view this as a plan, because it's not a plan. It's a, it's a possible tool. And I think what I was hoping for, and I think what other people are hoping for, is to see what the plan is, or just a general sense of what the plan is. And that's what I'm not, that's one of the things that I'm not comfortable with. So, I'm hoping that we can devise a more cohesive plan, we can look at those surrounding areas and figure out exactly what's going to be done to help clean some of that, even just appearance-wise. It looks bad. It looks really bad. And there are people in other parts of Evanston, because if I'm out at the ballgame or whatever, I'm talking to my friends, I'm talking to neighbors who don't live in my neighborhood, I get comments on a regular basis about that area, and I'm tired of it, because I have never felt uncomfortable or threatened in that shopping center. I've never had a problem. I've been robbed at gunpoint at a metro station, but I've never had a problem at this shopping center at all. And I think it's unfairly portrayed as an uncomfortable location. I have some reservations about some of the stuff that's going on there now. There's a, there's a security vehicle with sirens on that seems like it's constantly running around. Again, that creates, I think, maybe a negative perception as far as, you know, whether it's safe or not. But perception of the shopping center is an important component here, and I think that that's being completely overlooked. And I think the surrounding neighborhood is also being overlooked.
Did you want to respond, Paul?
Yeah, just a brief response to Alderman Wilson. Yeah, it's unfortunate that the TIF statute has this kind of technical nature to it when it comes to the plan itself, but as, one of the eligible costs with the TIF is actual community plan, so we, you know, we could, we could do that with TIF increment, you know. And our economic development staff is really highly focused on the west side, between being engaged with the West Village, West End, the shopping, the shopping center management itself. So, it's an initiative that we're, that we recognize and we're moving forward with.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. I think you're correct that the TIF is a tool, and if ever a place needed a tool, this shopping center qualifies. And so, I think if you support the tool, you will, in the end, get what you want, and you'll be very happy with it. Alderman Braithwaite.
I'll be brief, I'm paying attention to time.
Thank you very much.
But I do appreciate the conversation. I just want to go back to a couple of things that were said. First, regarding Scott Ann Binder, I've had an opportunity to meet with him. I know that he's been very cooperative with meeting with both the city manager and also our Office of Economic Development. Some of the issues that he's inherited, yes, high rent, we've talked about the care of the location, we've talked about the lack of security to Alderman Wilson's point, I think, if you look around town, it is standard, Sam's Club, I also believe at Howard Street, to see a car with lights as a presence for security. And I think that's, that's helped. Just in terms of Scott's presence, which I can appreciate, we've had a number of meetings in the community. He's been present in our ward meetings. Leadership Evanston, a couple of weeks ago, hosted a community meeting where they're taking a poll right now, that we have over, I think, close to 200 residents that have provided feedback to the small. I guess my point in bringing this all up, that I don't just think it's, it's a retail space for the second ward, I mean, it's a retail space for Evanston. And so, when I look at the disparity, when I look at the vacancy, I'm so thankful that we're using this tool as TIF, and I think Alderman Rainey's made this comment months ago, we do an excellent job here in Evanston utilizing TIF as a tool. This isn't the first time that we're doing this. And so, I guess where my concern is, I, although I can appreciate the conversation and being very detailed in the questions, I'm very confused about the lack of support that I'm hearing from some of my fellow councilmen, when we're talking about addressing this large retail space, the potential it has for all of Evanston. And so, I guess we'll find out on the 29th, when it's time to vote, and that's where I'll end my comments.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Oh, thank you very much, Alderman Rainey. Next is public comments from the floor, and the only person who has signed up is Jeff Smith. Jeff, where are you?
Over here.
I'm allowed to set time limits, and since you're the only speaker, I'm leaving it to your discretion, but please be aware that we have a full council meeting after this. So, lead us out of the wilderness quickly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and understood, I won't go on infinitely, but this isn't the nature of a hearing. I'll try and keep it to fact rather than an opinion. Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. I'm currently in the 22nd year of my most recent stint in Evanston, 27 years total, over 35 in the area. I'm a former customer of some of the departed shops at Evanston Plaza, but I've been going to them since, well, I'll date myself for decades. We used to go to Frank's a lot, Toys R Us, Kids R Us, people may remember-- We used to go to Frank's a lot, Toys R Us, Kids R Us, people may remember, used to be there, and it's a good place to get clothes. You talk about a food desert. Rogers Park was kind of a commercial desert at that point, and people came up to Evanston to shop. And I've also worked with several entities that have considered renting at Dempster and Dodge, including some not-for-profit organizations. I'm opposed to a one parcel, one property owner TIF at this location with a budget of almost $900,000 a year over the next two decades. That's in part because I'm not a big fan of the tool. I believe that TIF has been successfully used unquestionably at Howard Hartree, very arguably the first Washington National. I think it's overused in Illinois, Cook County generally, and to some extent in Evanston. It's a top-down development tool for some districts. It deprives them of revenue for non-tax cap districts. The rates of taxpayers outside the district rise as the overall EAV is divided into, but the increment from the district isn't included. I disagree that we should look at the short term, because we're locking away for potentially up to 23 years, up to two-thirds of the potential equalized assessed value of this property. That's an awful lot to lock away for that long. And the, the current investors have already gotten a couple of big breaks, which I'll go into the history of that. And I don't think that the requirements for the overused instrument of tax increment financing have been met in, in this instance. The property was bought by Joseph Fried and Associates in 1998 for about 2.7, 2 million. Fried was a significant customer of LaSalle Bank and developed a number of properties, including in Wicker Park, Madison, Wisconsin, Aspen, Colorado, as well as the infamous Block 37 in the Loop. There was, along with the residential real estate bubble in America, a commercial real estate bubble which hasn't been talked about as much. LaSalle was bought by Bank of America as part of that shakeout. Bank of America proceeded to foreclose not only on Evanston Plaza, but properties all around the country, including many that Fried owned, and they bought this property for about 12.3 million, according to public records. There were unpaid real estate taxes, and it was sold at great discount to the current investment group for about 8.1 million. So, they bought it last year for not much more, and certainly less after inflation, than it sold, changed hands for in 1998. But they have meanwhile appealed the taxes. The first pass for 2012 was over 7 million, but they got it down to 2.3.53 million. That's a 66% tax break. I don't know how many of you have appealed your taxes and got your assessment cut by two-thirds. I suspect not too many. So, there's a break on the price, and there's already a break on the taxes, and it's reducing it to well below the point where we would get the benefit of even the normal background rise in, in, in value. There's so, six so-called qualifications factors that have been found, but several of them are duplicative, and many of them relate back to vacancy. As a longtime patron of the mall, I don't think there's any problem with ingress or egress. The interior build-out really isn't significantly different than any other tenant faces anywhere. The Frank's space has been, you know, there was really only two medium box tenants, and one of them is still a big, a big box there. The remediation issues are irrelevant if you're not going to put residential on this space, because the property only changed hands in 1998 on condition that Fried was going to get a remediation letter from the IEPA. And so, you've got arsenic, lead, et cetera, that are underneath the existing stores, they think, but unless you're going to bulldoze it up and start putting condos with new foundations in there, it's, that's really not an issue. The obsolescence, if anything, is just due to the fact that there's challenges facing auto-oriented malls everywhere. But these problems, the problems with the mall aren't those that are, you're going to address through a tax increment financing district. The problems that have been identified at the mall relate to size. It's, a lot of national tenants like to be in more of a regional location. That's a location issue that Scott Enbinder has identified. It's viewed as too small by some chains and too small by some local businesses. Again, this is what the developers have said. There's the perception of crime, and I agree with the statements that have been made. I've never felt unsafe there. There's a restrictive Dominics lease, which has been a barrier to some tenants. There's been excessive common area maintenance fees, and there's been a recession. But a TIF isn't going to take care of any of those. The EAV rose last, faster last year than the city as a whole. There was a big drop previously because of the vacancies, but we were told when this was bought that it, that it represents an urban, dense market with a great deal of opportunity. Therefore, I don't think it's, it's blighted. And while we probably won't lose money by doing this, some districts might, it fails the but-for test, because a, you're probably going to get more taxes no matter what's done, assuming the developers say they are going to do, say, do what they say they're going to do when, when they bought it. Meanwhile, we're making a 23-year commitment in reaction to largely recessionary factors that, while severe in historical terms, is only of recent duration, and it isn't supposed to be permanent. The vacant storefronts at Evanston Plaza look just like the vacant storefronts in the mall south of the CTA station at Howard, if you drive through there. And I remember when that was just a glimmer in developers' and politicians' eyes. That was TIF'd, and you can TIF all you want, and you can build all you want, but unless you adjust to market and let the market work some of what markets are supposed to do, it's, it's not going to happen. Meanwhile, there's no question that it will have an impact on other taxpayers, so I'd urge the council to look very carefully at this, to explore other tools. There's not many areas in Evanston where you would build something that looks like the Glen, but this might be a place where you have a mini multi-use Glen-type area. The obsolescence may be in auto-oriented strip malls. This area may be saturated with them, and Evanston keeps on making it more difficult to drive around the city. So, let's not pump air into a collapsed shopping center bubble. Let's be very careful in considering the use of this tool, and take the long-term view rather than a short-term reaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That, I believe, closes public comments. If there are no others, I seek a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And now, we are back at the Evanston City Council meeting. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. It is National Preservation Month, Older Americans Month, and National Police Week. And I would like to extend my sympathies to the family of John Wyatt, who was the sixth ward alderman for 12 years in the 60s and 70s. He was the founder of the Rotary Club of the Evanston Lighthouse, and he was, I hear, an excellent bridge player at the Levy Center. So, I'm very sorry and wish his family all the best. City manager, do you have public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just two. First of all, on Friday morning, we have a economic development summit, talk a little bit about some of the issues we've talked about this evening, as well as others. If you've not already signed up for the summit, you can go to our website, citivevanston.org, and do that. I think we're well over 100 people. We've decided to move the activities down to the second floor here, rather than at the parasol room, because quite honestly, I think we've, I've grown the parasol room with the, the number of folks that, that are doing that. So, we look forward to seeing everyone here on Friday morning. They'll be started at 8:30, and go, will be done a little before noon. So, that is happening on Friday. Then on Saturday, Catherine Hurley, our Sustainable Programs Coordinator, has asked me to remind you that we're having a Green Ball, the inaugural Evanston Green Ball, presented in partnership with the Evanston Environmental Association on Friday, May 18th. First-time event will be a festive evening of food, drinks, and live music, designed to keep the ball rolling at the Evanston Ecology Center. Mission includes a taste of Evanston, sampling of food from local restaurants, artesian food providers and caterers, blues entertainment by South Boulevard Band, live auction and raffle, and beverages provided by Goose Island and Wine Styles. Ball is held from 7 to 11 at the Levy Center. Less than 30 tickets are remaining. They're going to be purchased at the Ecology Center or online at evanstonenvironment.org. So, Madam Mayor, those are my announcements.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No communic— no communications, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is citizen comment. Each speaker has three minutes, and we're delighted you're here to speak to us. Please give your name and address. First is Jeff Smith, then Elliot Zation, Darnell Johnson, and Nikolai Larbu Lestier. Sorry about, was that close at least? Thank you.
Thanks. I'll keep it briefer. This is regarding the resolution in favor of overturning Citizens United, which comes out of the Rules Committee. And I favor the spirit of the resolution. I emailed, I believe, most of the members of the council. I tried to email all of you. I support a resolution like this, but I would delete in particular the language that says that the Constitution only applies to natural persons. I think if we said that the Second Baptist Church doesn't enjoy the freedom of religion, or that Evanston Roundtable, or Evanston now don't enjoy the privileges of the First Amendment, we would be mistaken. Well, we don't want to be on record, I think, as urging any of those outcomes. We don't want Evanston Community Foundation to be subject to work, searched without warrant. So, I would modify that and limit the resolution to Senate Joint Resolution, I believe it's 29, which was introduced by Senator Udall and Senator Durbin and six other, well, originally five other senators. Now, it's up to 21 cosponsors in the Senate. Thank you very much. Thank you for your consideration of that. And Evanston would be a leader in Illinois if, if, if they did it. Four or five other states and at least 100 other municipalities are in record as urging the overturn of Citizens United for the reasons set forth and explained in the Rules Committee. Thanks.
Thank you.
Elliot Zation, 715 Asbury Avenue, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I commend the Rules Committee for proposing that the council pass a resolution to reverse the Citizens United decision. As you probably know from all the wherasses, that the, that decision has allowed corporations to spend unlimited amounts of money in our elections on behalf of candidates, and we've already seen a flood of funds into the electoral process. Although these expenditures are not made in exchange for specific decisions by officeholders, it's reasonable to suspect that the judgment of officeholders and would-be officeholders is swayed by these funds, especially when the sums are as large as they have recently become. Corporate donations are made with the intent of protecting corporate interests, not the interests of the average voters. As a result, average citizens are losing control over the electoral process that is supposed to guarantee that officeholders legislate to promote the interests of the great majority of Americans. Gradually, many Americans are realizing that the Citizens United decision is having a pernicious, pernicious, pernicious effect on American politics, and what can be done about that? One major effort has been to convince local governments to endorse resolutions favoring a reversal of Citizens United. Many cities and towns have already done this. Frequently, when these kinds of resolutions come before the council and other local councils, opponents will say, "This is not an appropriate subject for our local representatives." And I would assert that the integrity of our national and state elections definitely affects the matters with which our local representatives must deal. The capacity of our local government to deal with public needs that are part of its responsibility is heavily impacted by what our state and national administrations are doing or failing to do. So, to suggest that somehow local matter should be kept separate from state and national politics is to make an artificial distinction. I would assert that it is proper and urgent that our local officials lend their supports to efforts to make average Americans aware of the deleterious effects of unlimited corporate contributions to our politics. How these change will come about is not clear, whether the constitutional amendment will ever be completed. As Jeff points out, the language, there are many different versions. I don't think that's the real issue. The real issue is that we need to have a change in the way our, our elections are funded. We need to have money taken out of politics, and without constant and frequent voicing of this opinion, our elected officials at the state and federal level will not make changes. So, therefore, I urge the council to add their voice to the other towns and cities that are doing this, to support this general movement to see corporate money on the scale it's reaching taken out of our politics. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate having an opportunity to be here. We're here on behalf of 2424 Dempster, the Chicago Home and Chicken and Waffles Project. This is my wife, the actual owner. I think she hasn't been seen before, but this is Tanya Johnson, the main principal behind the project. We'd just like to say it's a privilege and honor of being a part of Evanston and hoping that we will actually be approved and have this project actually materialize. Just want to say one thing real quick. We had the opportunity to have Don Thompson, who is presently the president of North America for McDonald's, visit us twice. He had a chance to really have in-depth dialogue with myself and my wife and tell us how he felt about the project, and to inform us, in June, he will be the new CEO of McDonald's. We're really privileged to hear some of his insight on the project. He feels very strongly about the project. He thinks it's a very innovative project. He is from the south side, the west side of Chicago, near the Capri— Capri-Green, and he's a gentleman that really looks for new and exciting ventures. I don't know if you're aware of it, I'm going to make it very brief and to the point. McDonald's is the company that got Chipotle on the map, also Boston Market. They were very successful operations. The CEO presently after, Chipotle was able to buy out everything and become full owners of Chipotle. The CEO said there will not be any more projects for the next couple of years. Well, now that Don Thompson will become the new CEO, we do feel, and I think you can agree, that he is looking at this Evanston project very closely. So, I'd just like to reassure you, we're going to do everything in our power to make this project an unbelievably great success story, and have Evanston very proud of what we're going to put on that, in the corridor of the city. Again, we'd like to thank you, and we hope everything goes great, and you'll be pleased with what's to come in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nick, oh, Nikolai. Nikolai.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll keep this very brief. I just, my comments related to, my name, sorry, my name is Nikolai Larbu Lestier. I live at 2627 Lincolnwood Drive. My comment is related to our request for major zoning relief, specifically parking in the required parking in front. We live on a lot, small lot, that's smaller than the standard R1. It's a corner lot with no alley access, and we do not have a good alternative for parking. Our current garage is not really usable for parking a modern car, and we're looking to convert that space to living space so that we have room for our family of five. We've lived here for 11 years. We love the neighborhood. We feel that our project will preserve the character of the neighborhood. We're, we're working very hard at achieving that continuity with our current structure and the neighborhood, and we just request your, your consideration of our variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have two speakers on non-agenda items, Padma Rao and BK Rao.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. Your current bills list shows that you paid over $1,500 to Michael Casper for legal services, presumably for representing the township. Yet you stiffed Attorney Polini's most recent legal bill, even though he represented the township on and off for over 20 years. It is submitted that you should either pay both attorneys or neither. At your April 30th meeting, I asserted my legal right to opt out of your electricity aggregation scheme and make my own contract decision as suggested by the Evanston Sentinel. I asked to legally record my choice, not to debate why you disagree. It is submitted that public officials should not interfere when taxpayers state their views and decisions. This council claims to have closed— This council claims to have closed jurisdiction on key issues that face the community. First, at your April 10 meeting, your first ward member said that the Kendall property is presently in closed-door negotiations between the city and Cambridge Homes. At least two attorneys that I consulted argue strenuously that this matter is therefore still before the council. Second, your Ethics Committee allegedly cleared your first ward member of conflict of interest. My attorney reviewed your Ethics Committee's record. In his opinion, it falls far short of vindication, and in his opinion, it could be stylized as a whitewash.
Ms. Rao, as I explained to you before, it is my ruling that the Kendall matter is closed. The Ethics Committee has given its decision, and that matter is closed as well.
And it's still subject to opinion. If the Ethics Committee issues a ruling, why can't the public talk about it? Why can't the taxpayers talk about it?
Because the public has discussed it.
No, they haven't. When did the public discuss the Ethics Entity's ruling? When you announced it and then closed discussion about it? Then it's not possible to discuss. According to the record, the city lawyer attending the proceedings failed to mention the U.S. Supreme Court case Nevada Commission on Ethics versus Carrigan. According to the record, the city attorney failed to cite Illinois state statutes, 50 ILCS 105/1 at sequencies and 65 ILCS 5/3.15510 at sequencies, as incorporated in the city code 110.
Ms. Rao, as I explained, the Ethics Committee--
It is submitted that there were several instances in the record that suggest that members of your Ethics Committee asked about potential conflicts of interest in light of how income was--
--
--------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------
Welcome back to the Evanston City Council meeting. Ms. Rao, if you'll let your mother speak, she has three minutes.
I still have the balance of my three minutes.
You are way over your three minutes.
Only because you interrupted and you adjourned during the course of my public comment. You had no business interrupting.
Yes, I did, and I have made a ruling that Kendall is not a subject--
But the council is still considering it. If you talk about it on city time on April 10 and give a report, then it is indeed before--
Alderman Rainey. Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
You cannot move on to the next agenda item without finishing the preceding one.
The mayor is in charge of this. Would you be quiet? I'm standing.
You be quiet.
Madam Mayor, I move--
It's not the time to move to the next item.
Be quiet. You don't know what I'm doing.
You are in the middle. Be quiet.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I move that we give this woman one and a half minutes because she was interrupted previously, and then we can move on, and her mom can then speak-- Regardless of content, you are agreeing to that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. It's been moved. Is it seconded?
Second. Point of order.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, it was a valiant try. Ms. Rao, would you let your mother speak?
I have not finished my speech.
Thank you. Alderman Grover, would you give us consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I object.
You cannot move to the next agenda item without finishing the preceding one. You are still in the middle of public comment--
Alderman Rainey.
You interrupted.
Did you want to give the consent agenda? Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry that the proposal didn't pass, but I think you've kind of turned off the community.
You cannot move to the next agenda item without finishing the preceding one.
Madam Mayor, the consent agenda.
Refusing to discuss a matter with the public that you are still discussing and that you are expending city resources on, having closed-door meetings, is not appropriate. You are the city that sent me legal notice defining me as an affected property owner, and yet you deny me the right to speak when your notice confers that right?
All right, M1, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 23.
You have the ability to vote one way or the other, and you are still conducting business in the matter. You are still acting in the matter. You are still having meetings in the matter. Therefore, jurisdiction is squarely before this body, which means the taxpayers can speak when they are affected by the matter. No business of the city is more important than allowing the constituents the few minutes to state what they feel and how this council--
Now, you've gone over 10 minutes now, so are you almost finished? I'm trying to be really polite. You're being so rude. I'm trying to be polite. You're almost finished with your additional time.
I am not the one who interrupted someone in the middle of their public comment.
Madam Mayor, could you please make a ruling and let her finish so that we can get on? This is turning into a circus, and that's offensive to me. Could you make-- Ms. Rao, if you have one more minute, will you be finished, or is this going to continue?
If you allow me to finish my comment, I will--
I will allow you one more minute. You have already had way more than three, starting now.
It is submitted that there-- You could turn the microphone on, it would be helpful.
You're doing fine without it.
It is submitted that there were several instances in the record that suggest that members of your Ethics Committee asked about potential conflicts of interest in light of how income was accounted for and salaries were apportioned among the law firms attorneys, including your first ward member's son. My attorney pointed out that you are at a tremendous advantage if you, as the defendant, can control the complaint and allegations presented to any tribunal, let alone one chosen by your sympathetic friend. Third, it is submitted that the appearance of impropriety should have been highlighted by the city's lawyer, and your Ethics Committee should have been apprised of the U.S. Supreme Court's ruling in Carrigan. It is submitted that until such an evidentiary threshold is achieved, the findings of your Ethics Committee cannot possibly be persuasive. Their findings cannot end comment on issues that this council continues to discuss and that are not addressed in their report. It is submitted that since the council can change its vote, it has jurisdiction. The city mailed legal notice of the Kendall matter, stating that we have the legal right to speak as affected property owners. As such, we opposed this council's vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen trees to death and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. So protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall, which is what the city code requires. See you all next time.
Ms. Rao, it's your turn.
BK Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments are approved by my attorney. Not too long ago, a man named Galileo said that the earth revolves around the sun and not the other way around. Unfortunately, he was placed under house arrest for telling the truth by the ignorant and arrogant authorities of that time. When these countries' forefathers realized how important it is for people to speak their minds and bring their grievances to be heard, they created something we cherish as freedom of speech. On April 23, 2012, I wondered whether this council lives in the dark and ignorant times of those who imprisoned Galileo. Although I was not arrested, my microphone was cut off by your mayor. I never used profanity. I was fully clothed. I only stated the facts. These facts are from newspapers and city documents. It is submitted that I was silenced because you do not want me to talk about the truth. The truth is that the Kendall Resubvention was passed with no discussion, no discussion at all. The truth is that it involves killing trees, killing a lot of trees, a lot of old trees, endangering pedestrians. It involves closed-door meetings and conflicts of interest. The truth is that this taxpayer will speak in defense of the voiceless trees and helpless children unless you protect them. I'll be back.
Thank you. That was less than three minutes. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, right away. First item, Madam Mayor, on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the council meeting of April 23, then April, special meeting April 30, and another special meeting on May 7. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and asked your approval for the payroll through April 22, the amount of $4,2498,99.71. The city bills through May 15 in the amount of $4,650,484.85, and credit card activity through March 31 in the amount of $125,968.23. The 911 Committee and our staff, along with Administration Public Works, recommends that the city council authorize the manager to renew the annual sole-source software license and service agreement with Sun Guard Public Sector for the Police Department CADS system, the computer-aided dispatch system software, in the amount of $70,304.25. The committee asks your approval to authorize the manager to execute a one-year contract for purchase of Ford parts in the amount of $49,400 with Gulf Mill Ford, Inc. Approval is requested for this--
A3?
Oh, A3 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. I'm sorry. Next, approval is requested to authorize city manager to execute a contract for the Church Street Improvement Project and Dodge Avenue and Lake Street Streetscape Contract to Chicagoland Paving in the amount of $899,900. Funding is from West Evanston Tiff, which has a budget amount of $860,000, with staff requesting an additional approval of $40,000 of Tiff funds for the project. Next, we ask your approval to authorize the manager to execute a contract with H.B.R.A. Architects in the amount of $100,000 to conduct a detailed planning and architectural study of potential locations for a performing art venue in downtown Evanston. Funding is $50,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts Art Town Grant, $25,000 from Washington National Tax Increment Financing District, and $25,000 from the Evanston Economic Development Fund. We ask your approval also to execute a change order number one in the not-to-exceed amount of $37,623 to the agreement with American Pipelineers for the 2012 cured-in-place pipelining contract. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to execute change order number two in the not-to-exceed amount of $15,300 to the agreement with Kemp Dresser &amp; McKee, Inc., to provide engineering services for the 1964 Filter Edition Rehab Project. This will increase the agreement, the agreed amount, from $316,752 to $332,052. Next, we ask that you authorize the renewal of the lease of the computer lab in the main library to Workforce Board of Northern Cook County for a one-year term from May 15 to May 14, 2013, at a rental rate of $17,760 a year. Next, we ask your approval, we ask for introduction, and the local liquor commissioner agrees that Ordnance 48012 should be approved, which increases the number of Class C liquor licenses from 28 to 29 to permit the issuance to NSB Ventures LLC, doing business as the ALCO, at 512 Main Street. Ordnance, let's see, Ordnance 40012, increasing one-day liquor license fees is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next is, approval is requested for Ordnance 46012, amending minimum fines for general seat ticket administrative adjudication violations. These are non-parking ordinance violations. That would increase the minimum penalty for these general seat tickets fines by $10. This is for action tonight. Under Planning and Development, we ask your, the committee asks your approval of Resolutions 42R12, which authorizes the manager to execute assignment of real estate contract for the purchase of 1,600 Foster Avenue in Evanston for $1,500,000. Funding will be provided by the city's $18.5 million Neighborhood Stabilization Program II grant. This is to implement the first phase of Emerson Square, a new mixed-income housing development. Next, we ask your approval for one-year extension of the adopted plan development for the construction of a four-unit building by Brinshaw Development to be located on the currently vacant parcel at 1915 1919 Gray Avenue. Next item is going to be for introduction, and then will be addressed by the committee chair for action tonight. This is Ordnance 48012, which grants a major zoning relief for front yard parking and a rear yard setback at 2627 Lincolnwood Drive. Next is amending portions of the zoning ordinance related to home occupations. I'm taking this off the consent agenda to be addressed by the committee chair, as there was a great deal of committee discussion regarding the matter. Ordnance 38012 amends various portions of the city code relating to bed and breakfast establishments. Madam Mayor, I'm going to move introduction of this, and it's going to be returned to the committee. So, that's moving for introduction. Then, under P6, the committee recommends the adoption, the committee chair, Alderman Fisk, the committee chair can address what we did when they make the report.
Yes.
Okay. Ordnance 36012, we recommend the adoption of this ordinance, which grants a planned development approval, a special use permit for-- development approval, a special use permit for the proposed drive-through, replacing the existing drive-through, and approval of a major variation for the proposed new Walgreens at 635 Chicago Avenue for action tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff and the committee recommend the adoption of Ordinance 42012, which grants a special use permit for the operation of a commercial indoor recreation facility at 2125 Ashland Avenue. This is for action. Under Human Services, the committee asks your approval of the Township of Evanston April 2012 payroll and bills in the amount of $118,278.54. Next, the Human Services Committee and staff recommend city council approval of substantial amendments to the 2011-2012 action plans, including funding allocations to individual agencies. This must be submitted to HUD by May 15, 2012. Next, approval of the Harley Clark Mansion request...
A-3?
Yes, ma'am. This is removed, H3 is removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Under Economic Development Committee, the Economic Development Committee and staff recommend city council approval of 43R12, which authorizes the city manager to execute a loan agreement of up to $200,000...
Should take that one off.
This is taken off the consent agenda. This is the Chicken and Waffles resolution. Next, under Rules Committee, a member has requested that the matter concerning Citizens United be removed from the consent agenda for the purpose of amendments. Under Appointments, for appointment to the Housing and Community Development Act Committee, the mayor recommends Jeannie Sankey. Madam Mayor, with that, I conclude the consent agenda and move approval.
Seconded. It's been moved... And seconded to approve the consent agenda, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris.
A-3.3, the committee asks your approval of contract with Alpha Paint Works Incorporated for the 2012 fire hydrant painting, and Alderman Grover has an amendment to it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure I have an amendment. I did explore the possibility in connection with this contract, a year's contract to paint and refurbish, sandblasting and painting, fire hydrants in Evanston, the idea that perhaps we should expand our purple fire hydrant efforts to more of Evanston, and have learned with discussions with staff that we can do this. That is, if we, if we take the fire hydrants that we will be the older ones, sandblasting and repainting as part of this contract, we can do this at no additional cost to the city and no impairment to our life safety operations, that is, use of fire hydrants by our firefighters. They know where they are, doesn't matter what color they are. And I recommend that we consider then repainting as part of this agenda item, fire hydrants purple instead of red. And there is a possibility that I will explore on our behalf to secure some kind of contribution from NU Athletics, and has indicated they're interested as well. I can't tell you what dimension that would be, but they would be interested and obviously like the idea very much.
What happened to orange and blue?
Zebras striping our fire hydrants? I don't know. I don't know if we could explore whether other colors are within code for how one, code for fire hydrants. I know that purple is not within, outside the code for fire hydrants, because we've obviously already done that.
Doesn't purple have significance in terms of water quality?
It does, according to Director Stoneback, for those who actually know to look it up, and he himself didn't know until he looked up the possibility of painting them purple. So he would be the only person in the city of Evanston who probably knows that.
Alderman Tendem, thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I, I liked the idea of supporting university in this effort, I, and I could see actually the area around the university where there is an immediate tie-in to banners and other things that the university does so well, that a hydrant program that were, you know, included many purple ones around there would have a nice connection and a nice show, a nice support for the university. However, I do think it'd be a mistake to paint all city hydrants purple. It's not, you know, we have a very classic landscape, Parkway, we have, we have classic light posts, we have very traditional homes. I think that the red fire hydrant is kind of a classic American icon, and I also would be curious about, I'm curious about the legibility of purple. Purple's a dark color. If that figures into, you know, red is a color you can see both at night and during the day, it's very visible, and I think purple might be a, you know, have some potential danger. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Finding. Bumping in there.
Step out of your boat, Pura. Step out of your boat.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem. I absolutely agree with you. I, I think it's fine, if, if the university would like to ask for a permit to paint various fire hydrants purple and pay for them, I think that's a fabulous idea around the university. But I've had, I've had inquiries to paint other fire hydrants, colors that match corporate, corporate designs, and I've, I'm not sure we want to go there. I think that's something we probably want to talk about. Fire hydrants, well, for example, I mean, I did know that a purple fire hydrant is non-potable water, so I don't think we want to send that message out, that you can't drink water out of the fire hydrant. But I, I do think that it is a form of advertising, and while we might look at it as just a nice gesture of friendship, there's a lot of businesses, not-for-profits, other organizations in Evanston that have a color associated with them. The mayor mentioned the high school, for example. I think we need to figure out what our color is here in Evanston, and I think the default is a red fire hydrant for the time being. If at some time in the future we want to have an Evanston color and that color is purple, then so be it. But I, I think it actually does a disservice to everyone else who hasn't, has an interest in painting their own fire hydrants, and I'd hate to see the mishmash of colors around without some further discussion.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I never thought this would be the item that would get... But I think we ought to sell advertising on our fire hydrants. But that's, that's not why I'm standing. I'm sta, I wasn't going to mention this publicly, but since we're talking about this, this is exactly, and I'm going to refer this to Alderman Braithwaite and the Evanston Business Committee, because this is exactly the kind of purchase that should have stood, stayed in Evanston. The two bidders are outside of Evanston, have nothing to do with Evanston, we have hundreds of painters in our town, they should have gotten this job. How it was advertised, I don't know, but this is under $25,000. This would have been a very nice contract for a painter in our town.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I'm, I second the motion to simply approve the contract. I was just putting it out there as, and another idea, obviously, we've had a very successful purple fire hydrant plan, program in my neighborhoods without a lot of objection or even offense. So, consider it, think about fire hydrants in a different way, is all I'm asking. Thank you.
Are you, city manager, are you trying to speak?
If I may, Madam Mayor, I just want to be clear, we need to move forward with this project, and so, absent other direction, we're going to do red fire hydrants. Is that understood, correct, Madam Mayor?
That it... That is correct. The motion before us is for red fire hydrants, is that correct, Alderman Grover? Alderman, Alderman Burris, then...
Chair, Chair of APW.
Chair, the Chair of APW has spoken. All right, this is for action, and this is a money item, so, City Clerk, would you call the roll? You're voting on approval of the contract with Alpha Paint Works Incorporated for the fire hydrant painting.
Which is red. I know, I don't. So you got an amendment to it?
Starts with me.
First you gotta take...
No, we don't need an amendment.
Give it the way it is.
Just, just...
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
A-7, the committee asks your approval of Ordinance 40-0-12, increasing one-day liquor license fees, and Alderman Grover, I believe, would also like to address this.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. This is came before us in APW last night, and my thinking was that we should find out who pulls these one-day liquor licenses, see what the impact is on those who are seeking the license. Turns out, according to my read, this is low, very low impact in the city budget, I think it amounts to $2,800.
On the city budget? But it looks to me as if, as if it's going to be high impact to those nonprofits and those groups that are seeking the licenses, and I don't think for the type of events that they're hosting that these licenses are connected with, that we want to dissuade them from having those events in Evanston. This is just one piece of the budgets for a nonprofit that's looking to host, a fundraiser in Evanston, we'd like to keep them here. So given the amount of revenue that it accounts for, the estimate is $2,850. I would not support this and suggest that you vote no on this one. Thanks.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I would definitely suggest you vote yes, because the only reason this license is taken out is because they're selling that liquor, so they can add the tax to the price of liquor. But, you know, every penny counts in this town. I, and this is, this is a privilege to have a one-day liquor license, and I think, given the small amount of money that we're asking them to pay, and they are not the only ones paying, that it certainly is fair. And they are selling the liquor, so they can add to the...
Thank you, Alderman Rainey, seeing no further lights on for discussion. It's been, has this been moved and seconded?
Seconded.
All right, needs to be seconded.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to improve the res, the ordinance, increasing the number, or increasing the fee of one-day liquor licenses. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tendem.
No.
Alderman Grover.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Five to four. Five to four, the motion passes. Alderman Burris, does that complete your report?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. P3, Ordinance 48-0-12, granting major zoning relief for front yard, front park, front yard parking and a rear yard setback at 2627 Lincolnwood Drive. Would move, suspend, I would ask to suspend the rules first.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, would you call her? Alderman Fisk, sorry.
Can we discuss this?
Yes, of course.
I'm wondering why, what the need is to suspend the rules, that, without a burning need, it does deprive citizens of two weeks of additional comment? Is there construction that's pending, or...
No, there's no construction. Obviously, there is, and they did not anticipate that this was even a possibility, but they've been through a pretty laborious process and have made presentations all the way up from Spark through zoning, and had sort of an incomplete result at zoning. They have been really diligent in their effort to pursue this. There's no question in my mind that this site is appropriate for variance. There are, this is not one that I typically like or approve, but once in a while, a site does come along that just has no other alternative, and this is one of those. So I would really like to give them the advantage of not having to come back another night, and I think there have, certainly the issue has been aired at many levels in great detail, and they have, as you senior packet, neighborhood support, and I don't see any reason not to suspend the rules and get it approved tonight.
I'm going to object to suspension of the rules. I'm, I'm sorry, but it's, it is something that I think is important. It gives the entire community an opportunity to know that the vote is coming up, and given the vote of the, of ZBA and the fact that it's two major, major variations, I, I think that's, it's appropriate to give the community that chance.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It needs to be unanimous, so the rules are not suspended.
Then I would like to introduce, it's already been introduced, it's already introduced.
It was introduced, so in, in two weeks, you'll have a final vote. Alderman Holmes, do you have any...
Yes, Ordinance 39-0-12, amending portions of the zoning ordinance related to home occupations. Would, I'm trying to remember. I know, I know what I need to do. Okay, we, we would introduce it for introduction tonight. However, the committee, we had a big discussion on it, and we also made a recommendation to the staff to further look into the economic development staff and the legal staff and the business license staff to determine the best ways to license other commercial businesses that are not currently licensed by the city of Evanston, because it affects more than just what has been outlined in this, in this ordinance. So the staff has been referenced for that. So that was the action that was taken on this, but we did move to go ahead and introduce it tonight.
Was it on the consent?
Yeah, yes.
To be introduced, all right.
Yes.
They took it...
We didn't send it back to the committee.
You didn't?
No.
Okay, so it passed on the consent agenda already? All right.
Okay. Then P5, we had a lot of stuff tonight. P5, Ordinance 38-0-12, amending various portions of the city code relating to bread and breakfast establishment. We took that off because there were several recommendations that needed to be made that went back to committee. We're holding that in the committee. We did talk about distance, I think, of having the staff to, no, we recommended 500 feet. We voted on 500 feet of distance. We talked about having the staff reword and relook at the special event section, I believe it's 29, and also to rework the section that dealt with kitchens additions. I think those were the three things. Three amendments that would be there, so that will come back to the committee.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I think that's it.
Alderman Tendem, Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. H3, approval of Harley Clark Mansion request for interest. Staff recommends authorization for the city manager to issue a request for interest for the purchase or lease of the Harley Clark Mansion, 2603 Sheridan Road. I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. The reason that I asked to have this removed from the consent agenda is so that we could have two options. One, the, one is selling it while the city would own the, the underlying land, and the other would be selling the land beneath the building. I believe that we will lose one of our two prospective buyers if we don't sell the land. I do not propose selling, as I've always said, not a blade of grass, but the basic land under... but the basic land under the building would seem to me to be a logical part of the sale or something that we should at least explore. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we did discuss this at Human Services Committee, and we discussed, somehow I remember, asking for the two options, selling it, building only or building plus land. And it came out of committee just building only. But I am very supportive of issuing a request for interest for either one of two options.
Thank you.
And to see if we get the interest we're hoping for.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
I would further suggest that if we find ourselves in the situation where we do not have a prospective purchaser for just the building, that we look at entering into an option for purchase when that particular developer sells the property, so that we actually have a right of first refusal and an offer to purchase back the property at that time.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure why we would even consider selling the improvement without the land under it. So, I think that should be, I like your idea, though, if the second time it goes, gets turned over. But why, why would we not sell the land with it? I can just see the same story as with 1817 Church. It could go on for years. You think you've got a brilliant idea, you're going to issue a request for interest proposal, et cetera. You get nothing or crazy responses. So, let's make it as palatable and as attractive as possible. That's what I would think. So, I think your idea to sell it with the land and make that part of the information in the request for interest.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
Thank you. As part of the Human Services Committee, I realize that was the direction we gave the City Manager, but I too am open to looking at it in multiple ways. If we have some prospective buyers, that would be terrific.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve, oops, City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to be clear as to what we're asking. So, we're asking, we're going to offer options through this request for interest, either for the lease of the building, the lease of the, which would include the land, the sale of the building, or the sale of the building and the land. Or we, or is the build, is the sale of the building without the land now off the table?
I move it off the table. Who would want it? Who would want it?
So, or just all, and leave the language open that we're open to all options and leave
it to the proposer to suggest which option makes sense for them.
But with the land, could we be clear to the public that we are not selling the park land around?
Absolutely.
Just the land under the building. All right.
Thank you.
Did that make it clear, City Manager?
I, I think what you're saying is you want flexibility and also to reinforce that we're not selling the beach or the other park land around it.
Would someone like to amend the, the proposal? Alderman Tindham, would, Alderman Grover, would you?
I'd like to move approval of the request for interest for the Harley Clark Mansion, including options for purchase of the buildings and purchase of the land and buildings, that the land that they sit on as, in a range of options for a purchaser.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. That concludes. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I want to go back to the last item.
Okay.
How is that property zoned? Is it open space?
Yes.
And then, you know, I would really like to see this, the paperwork before it gets put in the mail to potential interested parties. How are, how are we going to, how are we going to promote this if it's zoned open space?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, on page, on page 791 of your packet is the page that deals with this. And it says, "The city plans to rezone the parcel to be compatible with the future use." So, we've left it open based on what the future use would be.
But I would make sure that we put that right up front and not on page 791 of the proposal.
Well, it's on page three of the, but we can move it to page one as well. And as far as advertising, Madam Mayor, members of the council, what our plan is, is that we would place advertisements in local newspapers. We'd also place an informational sign on the property.
Of course. But could we see it before, I mean, I would really like to see how we're going to promote.
Again, if you'd like to see the sign and the ads, we can circulate those. I think Mr. McCray is taking the lead. I've seen some signs sitting in his office that we use for notices for public hearings. So, these are not large, I think we're just looking to, Mr. McCray, correct me if I'm wrong, we're just looking to use those signs with a different kind of text on them. And then, the advertisements, I think we were thinking of quarter-page, simple display ads in the, in the roundtable and the review for that. But we'll make copies of those, the text of those available as you like.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, sorry.
I have, just have a question. When, when you do this and you reach out to prospective purchasers or lessees, what do you say for purchase? Are you saying anything about purchase price or lease time?
And again, Alderman Fisk, members of the council, what we've tried to do with this, and it's detailed under section one of the proposal, says, "The intent of this request of interest is to identify a qualified purchaser lessy to renovate and or, and use the existing structure. The selected purchaser lessy must have the necessary financial capabilities to complete this project. The objective is to track a user that builds upon the inherent strengths of the site while maintaining the historic character of the surrounding existing uses." So, I think we're leaving it open at this point under the request of interest. Then, once the council sees what those interests are, I think we would flesh out more details in our request for proposal.
All right. Seeing no further lights, I think we are now at call of the wards. Oh, one and oh two. Thank you, thank you, City Clerk. All right. At the Economic Development Committee, who's the Chair, Alderman Grover?
I move approval of Resolution 43R-12, authorizing the City Manager to negotiate and execute a loan for the improvements to real property located at 2424 Dempster.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no lights on for discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Absolutely aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one. The motion passes. The Rules Committee, Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move Resolution 40-R-12, City of Evanston's support of a constitutional amendment to effectively overturn the U.S. Supreme Court's conclusion in Citizens United against FEC relating to constitutional rights for corporate entities. And I have some amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
I propose amendments consistent with those suggested by Mr. Smith and Mr. McAuliffe, with whom this originated. I've spoken with him, and he's fine with this. The amendments are, in the second whereas clause, we would replace the word "artificial" with the word "business." The whereas clause would read, "Whereas business entities such as corporations, limited liability companies, and other entities established by the laws of the United States or any state or a foreign state are subject to regulation by the people through federal, state, or local law." My second amendment would be to delete the fourth whereas clause. That clause reads, "Whereas the Evanston City Council believes that the rights protected by the United States Constitution are rights belonging to natural persons only, and that the privileges of artificial entities should be determined by the people, semicolon, and." I would delete that whereas clause. Moving on to the resolution, in section one, I propose an amendment deleting the words "to establish that the rights protected by the U.S. Constitution belong to natural persons only and do not extend to corporations or other artificial entities," and, so that it would read, "The Evanston City Council supports amending the U.S. Constitution to permit the U.S. Congress and state governments to regulate corporate and special interest group expenditures in the electoral process." And finally, in section two, if you, are you following me? Still awake? Section two, the word "proposed" at the very end would be replaced by the word "sponsored." That's what I'm looking for. So, it would read, "The Evanston City Council supports efforts to effectively overturn the U.S., United States Supreme Court's ruling in Citizens United against Federal Election Commission, including the constitutional amendment sponsored by U.S. Senator Dick Durbin from Illinois." Thank you.
Thank you. There's a second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
All right. Now, I believe we really are done, and we are at call of the wards. Alderman Burrus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to send out a congratulations to Maple Khan and Erin Hellman. Maple is from the ninth ward, and Erin is from the seventh ward. But their award from the Kowanis, Evanston Kowanis Club, that they'll be receiving tomorrow morning, bright and early at 7:00 a.m. at ETHS.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to renew a reference I made to Human Services some months ago to amend the public place names, so that not-for-profit organizations, including churches, can be eligible to be qualified for a public place name and a street sign. I would like to do that for the Second Baptist Church. So, I would appreciate it if that could be on the next Human Services agenda, because we've been waiting now for three months.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just would like to thank the council for their support of the, that was an interesting vote, support for Chicago Chicken and Waffle. I'd like to thank the staff, Paul Zalmazak, it looks like everyone left, Steve Nancy, for all their input. I think it's going to be a great project, not only for the neighborhood, the ward, but also for Evanston, just a great collaboration of the city, Evanston First Bank and Trust, as well as the owners having skin in the game. I want to respond to Alderman Rainey's referral. I do agree that every penny counts. And this week, I would invite you to attend our MWEBE committee. We will have an opportunity to review the $20,000 and under spend. And I'm looking forward, not only to hearing that report on Wednesday evening, but also bringing that information back to council. Also, this Wednesday, 8:30 to noon, myself and Alderman Grover, along with Dr. Robert Mayer, who's a professor at Loyola, we plan on hosting the financial, thank you, summit here at the city, fourth floor, parasol room. More information online. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank everyone who came out to the third ward meeting despite the hailstorm. I thought it was just going to be the City Manager, Officer Whitehead, and me at the meeting, but we had, Wally says 75, I say 100 people there. And despite soaking rain, I won, and it was an excellent meeting with a great turnout and with a lot of good questions. I also wanted to remind everyone of YAY, the YAY Festival coming up. Despite the Viaduct construction, it'll be a great festival, and I urge everyone to come out. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's at the corner of Dempster and Chicago Avenue.
Alderman Wilson?
No, no report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Yes, just like to invite everyone, if you're still awake out there, fifth warders, the regular ward meeting is on this Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at Fleetwood Jordan. And also to remind those of you who joined us last year, that the first prayer visual for a safe summer will happen on Saturday, the 19th, at Springfield, at, I'm looking at Joe, I think it's 10 o'clock. Is that correct? At 10 a.m., I believe it is, starting at Springfield Baptist Church at Emerson and Daryl.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
No report tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
No report, thank you.
Thanks. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, and everyone out there, I just want to congratulate all those amazing police officers who received awards the other night. You know, when we complain about them, don't they have anything better than, to do than to ticket our cars? When you see all the things that they're doing when they're not ticketing our cars, they're much safer ticketing our cars. So, it was just amazing, some of the things that they did. And Tracy Williams was awarded the Officer of the Year, which is just wonderful.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene and do executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, C11, and C21.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.